Monday, June 5th, 2023, regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Present.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Present.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Present.
Counsel Harder?
Present.
Counsel Heath? Counsel Mack?
Present.
Counsel Tison?
Present.
Counsel Tyros?
Present.
Counsel Walsh?
Present.
And President Kuzinskas?
Present. Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward the deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of good city government. We pray a deed to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to so guide and inspire us that we may deliver in unity and harmony. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of open meetings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? We'll begin with the reading and approval of the March twentieth, twenty twenty-three joint public hearing with planning board meeting minutes. April third, twenty twenty-three joint public hearing with planning board meeting minutes and April third, twenty twenty-three city council regular meeting minutes. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented and waive the reading.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh to accept the meeting minutes as presented and to waive the reading of the minutes. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. There are no public hearings, communications from the mayor, orders, item one one zero zero nine, an order authorizing three hundred dollars and nine cents payment of prior year expenditure for police salary expenditure. Report from the finance committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Yeah, this was for a police officer who completed his college degree requirements during the course of the year, and it was overlooked in the regular budget process, and to pay it out, we have to authorize it. So I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to approve the authorization. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Ten yeas.
Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero one one, an order transferring ten thousand five hundred dollars from building inspector department, department head salaries to professional services expenditures. Report from the finance committee, Counsel General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. This transfer is for Acting Commissioner Hanks, who was the interim buildings, building inspector. He, this was a contracted cost, not a wage. The funds to pay him need to be transferred from the salary line item that are normally used for the, for this position to the professional service line item in order to pay the contract. Finance committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Ten yeas.
Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero one two, an order transferring five thousand dollars from human resource department department head salaries to pool department professional services expenditure. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Yes, there's a surplus in the line item for the direct disposition as it was funded for more than the salary scheduled that was passed. Therefore, there is a surplus in the account. We need to hire a pool operator on a contractual basis. So that is the reason for this transfer, and I so move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero one four, an order transferring three hundred seven thousand dollars from sewer surplus retained earnings to sewer department operating expenditures. Report from the finance committee, Counsel General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. The city was required, as we all know, was to submit plans for the sludge landfill expansion to mask the EP as well as the MIPA office. During this process, there, it was an open commenting period, and there were upwards of thirty, thirty-five comments, which the city must respond directly to each of those. Can't just point to parts of the report we submitted. This order, this transfer would also cover investigating the two alternatives to the proposed expansion, and this would cover the costs for, these would incur and to do both of these. The finance committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
This is a substantial amount for environmental impact report, obviously. This matter came up very briefly at the public service committee meeting, and the director indicated that in spite of the substantial cost for this report, it would not affect rates going, going forward. So I just want to be sure that people understood that this is not a, although the expense is substantial, it is not something that will, will impact sewer rates at the present time.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero one five, an order transferring thirty-nine thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars from sewer surplus retained earnings to DPW department new equipment. Report from the finance committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Yes, this is for the cost of sand to cover the sludge landfill. The city isn't using near as much sand as it used to since we switched to salt. And we, the cost is approximately half of what it would be to purchase at retail. The operator of the landfill has to absorb this cost, and it's cheaper for the city in the long run to do it this way. So finance committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas. The motion passes. Communications, item one one zero one six, a measure authorizing the mayor to execute the subordination for case number eleven dash two nine three for the purpose of the community development housing rehabilitation program. Counsel General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. As outlined in the packet, this is common practice. The property owner is refinancing, so the city's lien has moved to the first position. The subordination agreement would move us back to the second position in the, the order of the liens. Finance committee was in favor, and I move to adopt the measure.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Tyros to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll. Oh, no. I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera, item one one zero one zero, a resolution to seek membership in the AARP network of age-friendly communications. Counsel back?
Yes. In our packet, you will see a letter from the Director of the Gardner Senior Center, Director Ellis, and from the Council of Aging, asking us to create, create a resolution to support an age-friendly designation for the city of Gardner through the AARP. This is a free program that would allow Gardner to become part of the network to give us more resources for our seniors, including health, social, housing, transportation, and other key services and opportunities. So I would like to make a motion that the city council support in this, this project and pass a resolution to support Gardner as an age-friendly designation.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Mack, seconded by Counsel Boone to pass the resolution. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I asked the director if this is going to cause the city, or if it's going to put us into any restrictions on what we have to do, and he asserted that it was just joining and possibly getting services for the city. But we were not obliged to follow any services but access possible help, as Counsel Mack pointed out. That's all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Going to take item number one one zero one seven out of order, and we will entertain it under new business if there is no objection. Reports of standing committees, finance committee, item one zero nine nine zero, an order appropriating fourteen thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars from free cash to the IT department in City Hall copy machine account. Counsel Ron Cormier?
The question had come up, and we did discuss this with the IT director, leasing as opposed to purchasing. He said, in their research, they determined it was cheaper because the number of years that we managed to keep this. This one that we're replacing will be eleven years old, whereas a lease is usually three to five years, then you have to end up buying it out. There is no tax benefit for us, since we don't pay taxes, as far as having a lease. The new cost per print will be down to point zero zero four cents, as opposed to the existing one, point zero zero six. The machines are covered by a service contract, however, for toner and that. He said the school department does use leasing, because they lease far more individual machines, and it evens out their purposes for budgeting purposes. So he felt that we were still better off purchasing it, and since we did agree with this, I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas. The motion passes. Service committee, item one zero nine nine three, a petition by National Grid and Rising to England Incorporated, Elm Street, to install one, remove one, and relocate one jointly owned hole on Elm Street beginning at a point approximately three hundred and sixty feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Elm Street and Croft Street and continuing approximately five hundred feet in the south direction. P six dash eighty, replace and relocate plus or minus thirty feet west, install another, I'm s- I'm sorry, install anchor guy on west of pole. P seven dash nine nine is being removed. P ten dash nine nine is installing push brace on west side of P ten. Counsel Walsh?
Yes, this matter will be taken up at our public service committee meeting Thursday of next week, and so for that reason, we request more time.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. Safety committee, item one zero nine seven one, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, chapter three oh six, thereof entitled alcoholic beverages, to add a new section five thereof entitled marijuana retail establishments, to increase the quota allowed and change the method, the method for amending the quota allowed by the code of the city of Gardner. Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. We did meet on this item and discussed it with the mayor. This item relied on the prior zoning amendment for marijuana establishments that was removed from the calendar to have been passed. Therefore, this, this ordinance does not make sense. So we move to remove this item from the calendar.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Cormier, seconded by Counsel Tisoni to remove the item from council calendar. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item number one zero nine nine one, and I'm, an application by Gardner Tentons Incorporated for bowling alley license located at five sixty West Broadway. I'm going to step down from the chair on this, and Counsel Ron Cormier is going to take the chair.
On the application, report from the safety committee, Counselor Craig Cormier.
Thank you. We did have a chance to discuss this. We discussed with both the chief of police and the city clerk. This business has no issues with the police department and is in good standing on the tax rolls. It's a longstanding business, and therefore, we were unanimous, and I recommend approval of the application.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counsel Harden to grant the application. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Nine yeas, one abstention.
Thank you, Counsel Cormier. Committee of the whole, item one zero nine nine six, a memorandum from Mayor Nicholson regarding the FY twenty twenty-four city budget. Counsel Walsh?
Move the communication be placed on file.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Mack to place the communication on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one zero nine nine seven, a measure authorizing FY twenty twenty-four revolving funds for the city pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E and a half. Counsel Walsh?
Move the authorization. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to grant authorization. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one zero nine nine eight, in order to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-seven million eight hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred seven dollars and ten cents for the various departments of the city for the expense budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Counsel Walsh?
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Ten yeas.
Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one zero nine nine nine, in order to raise and appropriate the sum of thirteen million four hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents for the various departments of the city for the salary and labor budget for the fiscal year beginning on July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Counsel Walsh?
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Ten yeas.
Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero zero zero, in order appropriating the sum of thirty-one million three hundred nineteen thousand forty-six dollars for the school department budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Counsel Walsh?
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero zero one, in order appropriating the sum of a hundred ninety-seven thousand two hundred twenty dollars and twenty-two cents from available funds, cable commission fees reserved to cable commission budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Counsel Walsh?
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero zero two, in order appropriating the sum of ten million three hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred forty-four dollars from available enterprise funds, various receipts reserved to various enterprise accounts for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Counsel Walsh?
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero zero three, in order appropriating the sum of four hundred thousand dollars from available funds, bond proceeds reserved to interest outside debt for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Counsel Walsh?
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Ten yeas.
Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero zero four, in order authorizing a transfer of the sum of two hundred twelve thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents from sewer retained earnings surplus to fund the FY twenty twenty-four revenue budget. Counsel Walsh?
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Ten yeas.
Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero zero five, in order authorizing the transfer of the sum of sixty-eight thousand seven hundred twelve dollars and eleven cents from solid waste retained earnings surplus to fund the FY twenty twenty-four revenue budget. Counsel Walsh?
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero zero six, in order authorizing the transfer of the sum of ninety-six thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars from landfill retained earnings surplus to fund FY twenty twenty-four revenue budget. Counsel Walsh?
Move the order. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas. The motion passes. Item one one zero zero seven, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, chapter one seventy-one thereof entitled personnel, to change the compensation schedule, exhibit E, non-union personnel. Counsel Walsh?[1507.14]
Who the ordinance amendment be sent to first printing?
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to send the ordinance amendment to first printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Rhonda Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Dernawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration, item 10861, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 42, entitled One Way Street. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. We did discuss this item. We have sent this to first printing, and in the time since April 10th, the majority of residents appear to be favorable on this item. So I move to send this to second and final printing.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Craig Cormier, seconded by Counsel Tisoni to send the ordinance to second and final printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. New business, we're going to take item number 11017 under new business. A notification from City Solicitor John Flick regarding City of Gardner Open Meeting Law, OML, self-report. Counsel Walsh?
Who the communication be placed on file? Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to place the communication on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Moving into council comments and remarks. Are there any council comments and remarks this evening? Counsel Ron Cormier?
Several of us have been on the city council for a long time. And the budget process doesn't necessarily always work as smoothly as it did this evening. For those that are watching, the informal meeting before this one, we reviewed all parts of the budget. And there were no changes to be made because the budget presented by the mayor was balanced and well within the confines of Proposition 2 and a half. He did the work for us, if you will. Each of the four individual subcommittees of the council, however, spent many hours collectively reviewing the various components of the budget and presenting their findings to all of us. And I think it's commendable at how well the process worked and has continued to work here in the city of Gardner. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further council comments and remarks? Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. This past Saturday was the GHS and GALT graduation ceremonies. And we have to counsel and wish them good luck in their future endeavors.
Thank you, Counselor. Further council comments and remarks?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to concur with Counselor Ron Cormier about the budget process, and the mayor's careful, and our city auditor does a terrific job in trying to make sure that we're not overspending and we're, you know, trying to make sure the city moves forward while still keeping an eye on the budget items. And I appreciate that, and I concur with Counselor Cormier about the budget as a whole. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Mac?
I just want along the lines of the budget that not only do we just attend our own subcommittee meetings, but it's very time-consuming because it allows us to watch the videos of all the subcommittee meetings and see what our fellow counselors ask for specific questions from all the department heads. And it gives us times to also reach out to not only the mayor, but to the other department heads if we have further questions. So it's a very comprehensive process, more than what you just saw here this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Harder?
Yes, I'm sure that the public out there has noticed that there are American flags hanging from many poles throughout the city. And I wanted to say thank you to the DPW for putting them up, and I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Mayor. South Gardner has been asking for those for years. And sometimes, I mean, I've had a business up there myself, and sometimes they would say they feel like the stepchild or something, and I'm just, they're thrilled up there, and I wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further council comments and remarks? Counsel Tisoni?
I just want to take a moment just to carry on, kind of tack on with what Counsel Tyros stated. Congratulations to the class of 2023. And giving out over $600,000 worth of scholarships in our community, what an amazing number. There's, you know, it goes a long way for these students to advance their education. Both my daughters have taken advantage of that as well through the city and my, and my son as well. So I just wanted to congratulate the class of 2023 and the opportunities that we have here in Gardner for our students to move forward for higher ed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Final call, Madam.
Counsel Boone?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending an event, wedding event this weekend for former Counselor Nathan Boudreau along with the mayor. And it turned out great, wishing them luck and appreciate his service to the city. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further remarks and comments from the council? Seeing that there is nothing, I will entertain a motion on the floor to adjourn after the closing prayer. Motion made by Counsel Cormier, seconded by Counsel Tisoni. Is there, the clerk will, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes.
Almighty Father, who sees over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of your deliberation and actions witnessed during the course of this meeting. Blessed be the Lord, all who are gathered here, and the people who represent us here, and in fact, our center upon welfare, until our next meeting. Amen.
Thank you, stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.